So, what was I just like?
I'm sorry.
I'm looking for some things.
So, you're gonna start moving these around too?
Why would we kick all the people out of the room? Standing around like?
I'll slide around this chair and I'll be up.
Yeah, but.
Tiny ones?
Yeah.
Hundred and a half now.
I think we take this real bad. I mean, it's just more than that.
Not bringing up all the controversy.
No, we're just talking about a pandemic. We're just getting a pandemic.
But what not today, one is.
That was, that's what I.
Now, I've always think.
Sort of.
I don't know if you said.
Sort of thing. I think.
Don't you all do this?
Oh, yes.
You're sure.
They have so much.
But we're going to.
Yeah.
Um.
Teach?
Yeah, it's.
Little Steven.
We were more or less thinking.
Yep, we're all gonna rob, rob, jump on that. So. Well, that's true.
Uh, I don't know.
Yeah, it's like that. But I just say, to me, it's just a. What is that? Who wants to down by the place? Somebody else. No, I can't have something. My needs is selfish, so I must. So, I must be doing something selfish. It's what they have. All those are saying. She put me at charge. That's all. Let you then. Yeah. It's me. You know, I don't think it's your side. Because they's. Because they don't want to. You know, I don't know. So, I don't know. Apparently, what I know, I can't. I don't see yet. I don't think. Everybody has to see. They said this don't. They want to stay at the shower. Like, hey, what he said. Well, it's like.
Wow.
They got. There's like, there's just a bunch of them. So, I mean, we bet some dog. And. Yeah, that is fun. I think that's somewhat alternative. That I don't.
It's kind of like a screening, so.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, that is very tough. Sturridge. Yeah.
Yeah.
He runs. Something like that. Where's the?
No, I know what you're doing.
But I think. We check. It's like. Yeah.
We have don't.
There's. I think. Public, everywhere those. Congratulations. Things. They think public watch. Get my name up this year. It's a public person. It's fucking. So, unless you're the. Yeah. But that, yeah, they don't want to. So. But then. But then it would be, yes, and then. Pretty much. So. Oh, yeah. It was a good. Yes. It's too.
Oh, there's.
Also. Just to say. What's what you're doing? As this makes people available isn't. Be like. So, that's. That's.
So.
Share for. We don't. That's how. It's. You know, that. God, it's. Just. But in. If you really wanted to. You want to. We'll get that. You know? That's. Yeah, because what I.
Can't read that. It's a.
In conditions. Yes. I mean. We need to stop that. That's the. I didn't. I just. I don't know. Yes, too. Yeah, no kidding. Yeah, it's really like. It's all. It's all agree. Yeah.
No restrictions.
Cool.
Do you have some type of CD legislation?
Yes. There really is.
It's like, it's just, it's like a cake walk.
Save the center for you.
And then when the music starts, we can walk around the table.
Okay. Or his. Or his chair.
We're gonna keep, we're gonna give him around a chair.
Here. I screamed out in here, okay? All of that was a pocket. So, like, shoot. What is this? Yeah. Good. And we. It's America first. And then imagine. Which means.
It's like. Yeah.
Yeah. My mom. You're speaking. Like.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's actually. I shouldn't ever. You know, like. You said. Just. Yeah. So. All six. Yes. That's. That's. Okay. The world was. It's a. Fast. For Saturday. It's very. I just like. We don't. Produce. So, it's. They remind me. They can do this. I don't think. It's actually. And it's. You don't want your. That's. I just. I think. How. Time. I mean, yes. That was because. Isn't this. I told. I think. Fresh. Yeah. Those say.
Uh.
I think. Be similar now.
That was awesome. Like a lot of.
Wasn't here. Really good. That was. I think. I'm really interested in. When I heard. I'm. It's. That's all. Uh. I'm really. It's well played. I don't. You don't think. Okay. I mean, that's. Down this line. That's. That's. My. I also. Otherwise, it was just. Yeah. It's. I think this was. Go. Fine.
Sure, let's see. How deep? It's all trend.
I always hear. Gost. Yes. I do really like this. That's. She does. At issue. So. That's like.
For you.
Nice. See, yes. Yeah.
I feel like.
Really? Really? This is us. We were scared to do. No way. The guy was trying. Said. We went to sleep. Oh, you swear. Yeah. Yeah. How long? On this thing. Yeah. Yeah. It's.
Only for me.
Said one.
Don't mention it, no?
All the. All the way up. Some of you. I don't. Want to see. It's right up. Yeah. It was. Way to. Yeah. So. Yeah. Okay. Students. I was so. I'm. I had also. Yeah. I just wanted to do that. We're sick. The others that we didn't think of. They. That's the test. I really. Well, we said. I'm. It was. That's. That's. It's too quick. Check. That's. And basically. I want to. Like. That's.
So, we're.
Mission. Yeah.
Certainly.
I'm. I want to have a. See.
Absolutely. It's.
We're. I was gonna talk. I was. I'm. With a. Sorry. I. I started off the. The. There's. There's. Anywhere. Also, there's. Six things. Is that right? Guys, for. Squad. It's.
For the time. It wasn't standing.
Because. She is. Into the shop. She's. So. She was. It's just isolated. That's. Also. The. Yeah. Also. Same with this.
You're sending.
I was just gonna give the, uh, short presentation.
Yeah. Literally, they're all. I think just. This. I don't.
Oh, so much.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did. Um. But. If you wanna. I mean, otherwise.
Thank you guys.
I could just hang out.
I get it all.
I should just. Be back.
Yeah. That's.
Yes. I'm.
I would say. She. I thought. It's.
Me too.
It's.
Oh, she's.
It's.
Same.
Super. So. It's. I.
Forty.
It's.
Try. Not. Home.
Is that?
I just.
It was. Please. Got. It's.
Okay.
First. We're. It's. One of this.
Yeah, I think. Just. Sorry. See. See how much. You're. Nice. From. I support. It's. I had. Like you should. That's.
They must. Every year. I'm. Only by. My. So.
Yeah, it's like. It's. Series. Uh. But I. Watch. Your.
That's. Well, this is.
On Facebook. Watch. The.
Oh. I. Attention. They're not. What's. I gotta say. So, I gotta make. Yeah. Who's asking?
It's one. Pretty. But.
But. They just. They. Yeah. Right. And it's. That's. I suppose. It's. I'm. Everyone. About this. It's. It's. Give us. Have a chance. Just gonna give us. It's gonna be. About ten. That's. That. I'm telling you. I don't know. I already have a thing. Uh. No, I mean, that kind of narrow it down. The second. When. President. But at the end. It's. That. All. Okay. The thing. I don't. Feel like. Oh, I don't. Actually. Like.
Carla, do you want to help though? Uh, like the agenda? And then you. Like. Because I just wanna be, make sure.
Thank you.
Like. Carla.
Yeah. I can. About. Box. It's.
Oh, God.
Oh, we got. It's. Yeah. Well. Yeah. So. Yeah. I. So. Would that. We.
Yeah.
It's like I don't. Most. About. I just. More than. The. Then there's. There is. I think. Why? Why? That. Yeah.
To be.
Well, it's. Nice. Turn up. Here. It's. All I want to. How much? Has like. You kind of. You would like to help. He'll. He'll. Yeah. It's me. Yeah. This. Eight. Yeah. Oh. I. I lost it. Point. Zero. Um. No way. No. Point. That's like. Try two. Years. That's ridiculous. And then this. I lost. They. That's. So. Four weeks. That's. They go to the browns house. Yeah. Because. A lot. Of. Oh. I get to. This. All of that. Cost. I'm. She's. I'm. Her. It's. So. I. I. Wait. You said everything.
Yeah.
I grabbed the meat. Sure. Yeah. Thank you. That would. Sure. Yeah, yeah. I keep. Typing. I know. Something. She. So. So. It's. Just. Why? I guess. Better. No. So. I'm. You know. I said. Obviously. Yeah. That was. Yeah. Like. It's. Yeah. And. That. He. Yeah. I. Yeah. This is. It's. Things. Maybe. She has. She goes. Yeah.
It's a big.
Everybody. Six. And. Oh. I'm very tired. It's. Oh, God. Yeah. It's. Yeah, this is. Change. It's. It's. I. Never. So. Whatever. I think. Look. I do. Oh, my. I'm. Go ahead. It's. It's. Same. It's.
Someone's. And have their. It's.
Then you have. Two. Ridiculous. It was.
Yeah.
Each.
Yeah. Well, the. Falls.
Bruce. Yes. I just wanna go. Are we ready? You can.
I am. We'll let you call the. Meeting for order.
Oh.
And, uh, Carlos. You can say. Okay. Uh.
Call the order for Watertown City Council and joint meeting with the. Planning Commission for an adjustment. Uh. Carla, please call the roll.
Sure thing. Colleen.
Here.
Danforth.
Here.
Edler.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Shuddy.
Here.
Jurens.
Here.
Pepper.
Here.
Where it was established for city council. Now, on to the planning commission. If you called order the Watertown Plan Commission meeting. Well, they're roll call. Carla, can you help with that?
All right, Dolly.
Here.
Kay.
Here.
Colain.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Dargitz.
Here.
Oleski. Bonnie, can you hear me? Bonnie's online.
Bonnie, are you unmuting?
Yes. No, no. I figured it out. Thank you. I'm here.
Hello, and then Brink. I don't believe Jeff is online. All right, then Brink right now is absent.
We are, Carl.
I'm going to pass off, uh, the meeting, running of the meeting to. Councilman Jurens, who chaired the CL. Joint Task Force.
Uh, thanks, Mayor, for, uh. Forming this, uh, task force. Um. I was chosen the chair just to. That's my award out at the, uh, at the, uh, lake. So, uh. I had the least amount of experience when it comes to zoning. Um, but have seen and had is probably more calls than anyone else. When it comes to, uh. Things that come in front of, uh. Uh, things that are happening at the lake. So, uh, uh, Mayor, uh. Formed the task force. Uh. Todd. Uh, Kay's. I, I wrote these down so I wouldn't forget. Bonnie Oleski was first. She's here, uh, via remote. Uh, Blake Dolly. Uh, Todd Kay's from the planning commission. Uh, Mike Danforth, city council. Kyle Peters down, uh, city council and myself. Uh. And Carla. Poyer has been, uh, to every one of these meetings almost and, uh, taken, uh. Very good notes about. Our progress through, through this. To, this evening or this afternoon. Uh, the main thing we want to do is to, uh, get some, uh, ideas. Uh, that you may have based on the direction and how far we've come so far. Um, I think I'll just go through the presentation because that'll tell us. Tell you how many meetings we've gone through.
Helen, I made a mistake.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Oh, sure.
From the way by councilman Tubber. By councilman Peters, any conversation on that? All. All those in favor of the agenda, please say aye. Uh, aye. Can you post a name? Motion carries.
Well, and the commission need to do the same.
Not sure.
All right. We're good? All right. So, the, the first question we asked. Uh, and, and attempted the answer here was. Why are we doing this? There've been some longstanding concerns with the current. Commercial lake, uh, zoning ordinance, uh, on like, mostly dealing with Lake Compesca. Uh, there, there's a lot of. People that wanted us to maybe look at, uh, Lake Pelican. But. For simplicity. And where all the controversy seems to come from is Lake Compesca. So, that is what we, uh, chose to focus on for now. Uh, the timeline, we began these meetings on. May 6th. Uh, the committee has met 10 times over the past six months. It started out, we had media there. We had, uh, uh. We had those from, uh, the, uh, the lake joining us and, uh. I don't know, it must've gotten so boring and so intense that. And, and it is. It's, 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 uh. It's just essentially work. And, uh, work that I was, uh, surprised that, uh, just being the first time through this, uh. Taking advantage of, of three more people on the committee. That have been. Through this multiple, multiple times. Planning Commission, city councilmen, uh, city councilmen that have experience in. Other areas in the state. So, um, you know, just. Putting these things all together, um. 10 times we've met. And our goal now is to have something. To come forward with over the next couple of months and have it done by the first Digiannuary. Um, to bring, uh, something. More concrete. There's still a lot of work to be done. Uh, our goal was to create a framework. For responsible commercial and residential development at the lake and the surrounding areas. Our ideas that we were working on is to identify specific areas. Where certain types of commercial development could occur. And create a process that removes ambiguity and encourages a positive decision-making process. Uh, ambiguity. Again, everybody can have their own, own definition of what's ambiguous, but, uh. Uh, we'll get into the, some of the things here on our next slide. That will show, uh, some work that has been done. And maybe this will take some of the ambiguity out of it. And. I know it's not blowing up, uh, but, but really what we've done is we've taken, uh, this. And identified three different areas. Um. The three different areas are. On the lake. Across the road from the lake. And behind. I, I'll see what we call it. It's called Zone 3. On a lot that is neither A or B, or neither Zone 1 or Zone 2. So, when you start looking through the colored coatings of them. Uh, the yellow is our Zone 1, Commercial Lake 1. The blue is Commercial Lake 2. And the orange. Is Commercial Lake 3. And we'll break down those, I believe, on the next slide. Uh. You can, uh, look at the areas identified in the ordinance and split it into these three groups. Geography was taken into account, such as. You'll see the brown areas. Those are sloughs. Those are, those are backwaters. This is Toby Slough down here, which has been in the news in the last year. Uh, and of course, across the, uh, the way from, uh, uh, the bridge on the northeast side. Uh, nothing's being rezoned with the, rezoned with the, uh, adoption of these amendments. Meaning, everything that's in place now, uh, is sort of grandfathered in. Uh, all established zoning at the lake, uh, and then, uh. I think that's really kind of. A lot about what we, uh, ended up with there. But. Uh. Just. Add a little. Case. We also, we were gonna try to support each other on this little venture. And, and what the whole intent. Is that we, initially, the Commercial Lake District is a half mile all the way around the lake. Based on, in the land use plan identifying, these are areas that can be. And what. It seemed to us that a lot of the consternation has been, there's been. Uncertainty. Of what could be developed commercially at certain areas around the lake. So, we took the approach to take, as, as Lynn said. Divide areas. What could you expect to see on the water? Across the street or in the area within a half a mile? Knowing that some of that's also county land and there's gonna have to be. Further conversations with the county on some of that. But basically, it's more of a roadmap. Saying that in this part of the lake or adjacent to the lake, this is what we can get into. And that took us to the next step. Right? Yes. Uh. We identified these. Uh, is that what you're talking about is the next step? The, these identifications of the Zone 1, 2s and 3s? Right. Because we, we started with the premise of the existing uses outlined in the current CL district. That's currently permitted and conditional uses. And we went through them one by one. That's. One by one. Everything that was in. This list. That, uh, has been on and that we've been going with for, what, the last five years or so? Uh, we went through those one by one. We went through the definitions. We tried to identify what they're being defined as, but it's not. It's, it's not perfect. It's, there's, there's still. Ambiguity even in the definitions sometimes because of, of different. Ideas and, and, and ways of going. So, uh, what we want to accomplish here, and this is just about the end of our presentation, is. Are we on the right path? That's the big question. And what's next? Uh, we want to know if we're on the right path and here's what, what's next going on. We want to be able to define, uh, what Lake, Lake Retail is. Uh, so it's a special, uh. It's a, uh, SPU, or a SPU, uh, Special Permitted Use. Uh, but what. Establishments and what guidelines would they need to go by, uh, to qualify for the SPU division? Uh, that's one thing that's a lot of work on. And then these design standards. Defining what Lake PUD is and then establishing, uh, uh, design standards. Go ahead. So. The big thing that you're seeing up here is you're, you're seeing those different zones on the lake. And then we took the different uses and we, we, we deleted some of the uses that were currently in that CL zone. We've taken them out completely. And some of them that are listed in there, they say no. And, and means no. So, we're proposing that they don't occur on the lake or across the street. Only under certain circumstances. What we wanted to do from the certainty standpoint, those, if it is listed, if it's a yes, or if it's an SPU or this conditional use. There is some expectation that. The next step, if we come in and lay out what the parameters of that use. So, let's just say a restaurant. A restaurant is listed, uh, on Zone 1. Uh, in the, as an SPU. That's a Special Permitted Use. So, if there's 15 design standards that we lay out in the zone of what a restaurant won't be. Then it doesn't come to the zoning board. It doesn't, it goes straight to staff. And the staff will check the boxes and if the boxes are checked, it gets approved. And what we talked about here is that trying to remove having to have a fight. Every time a single use comes in. The fight need is going to happen when you come to ask to rezone the property. If we decide to rezone the property, then everything else becomes perfunctory. After that. We have guidelines in place. And you can see by those zones. It's a very restrictive zone, whether you're in CL 1, CL 2, even in CL 3, this Zone 3. It's, it's very restrictive. On the water, you're talking. Maybe a few retail establishments, whatever we define them as. And a restaurant. Uh, a church. And any campground that's existing on the ground today. That's all that you get to do in the CL zone that's touching the waters. Based on this model. And so, and then you can just kind of do the math of going across the, the matrix. And you can see that the further the way you get from the lake. Or opportunities that you have to do different types of commercial zones, commercial uses. But the heavy lift coming, going from here. Is saying, if we're on the right path and we, we kind of, I like your concept. Of zones. And these are the uses to start with. Give us the latitude to then sit down as a group to figure out what the standards. Are going to be for those specific uses within those specific. Zoning areas. That. Blake. Yeah. Yeah. And that was a big. Open up of Blake because he had a lot. Of input on this and then Mike Danforth also on our. And that was a big contributing factor for the ambiguity and the, the reason that you're going into those zoning requests. Nobody knew exactly what that ground was gonna turn to. Because the, the range of potential options, as we see up on this list. Is today quite large. And it could be anything on that list. Well, yeah, they sold the property. If the business that they were. Commercial use that they were trying to use didn't work out. They could switch to any of the options that were open right now. Yeah. And this starts to. Box in that ambiguity. Yeah. So, we, so we took a very kind of restrictive view, especially, you know, immediately on the lake and immediately across from the lake. Of those potential types of uses. It gives a surety to both. The residents and, and landowners there, as well as developers, knowing that, you know, these are the central premise of the expectations. It's not 20 different uses. It's a handful of uses. And with the uses that are listed as SPUs, there would be some very stringent design requirements. Things like setbacks and green space and landscaping requirements and some of these other things, construction materials. The 50%. Yeah, all the, all these things become designed criteria.
You should.
Yeah. And we do that in other areas of town too. So, there's not a unique concept of these overlay districts, uh, for the lake. We've got this, uh, in coming into Watertown. Drive. So, we've got some landscaping requirements there. We've got downtown overlay as well. So, um, the concept of these overlay districts applying to a mapped out section of land is something that we use in other districts. And just to reiterate, but Lynn also said, work. Not proposing to rezone anything. We're just saying that if you were going to rezone at the lake, these are the options. We still have to go through that process. That's the one-off that you end up doing. Uh, Bonnie, uh, as long as we're on planning commission, there's anything you wanted to add to that or?
No, I, you know, we went over all of this. It's just, it took us a while, but I, I think we did everything. The way we were supposed to do and we came up with this. And I think it's pretty easy to understand and will help developers.
Um, Mike? Would you like to add anything now?
Of course. Um, just, first of all, like, our, our reference of the, the zone, that the Zones 1, 2, 3 is just for. Purposes of this discussion. It's not a name of them. It's just a reference as to where they're at. Um. Lynn had, uh, had. Touched on this, but, you know, we already have definitions for some of these things within our ordinance, uh, definitions. And some of those are going to. Need to get looked at. For example, the one I'll use is, is the retail establishments. Is most likely there will end up being a definition for retail establishments as it's in these three zones, which would be different. Than what we would. Uh, have for a definition in city property per se. So, so that's gonna get, get, uh, looked at and, and worked on. Uh, it's also been touched on. You know, that. We aren't rezoning anything. This is just a, a roadmap or a, a format for us to use. And it's really important, I think, that this doesn't. Impede anyone from coming in and requesting whatever type of zoning, uh, within this area that they desire. They are property owner. It just gives, uh, staff, it gives developers, it gives. Plan Commission members, it gives city council. A better roadmap to work. It's through the process so that. Everybody has, has at least a better understanding of what, what the plan is. Um, the one thing that this, at, at where we're at today, uh, to me. This is a closer reflection to what my interpretation of what the Lake Compesca Master Planning Process. Defined, that document. Um, where it, it said to identify areas of commercial opportunity, development opportunity. To me, this is much, much closer to. What was stated in there than, than. Where we ended up in ordinance language. And so, I, I, my opinion, I think it's, it's on the right track. Lot of work yet to be done on defining and stuff. Now, that's, this is really the hard stuff now, to be honest.
The one thing we should probably also reference is that. In the existing Lake Commercial Talks, the purpose of multifamily, being stripped that out completely. Some of the Commercial Lake District because we want this to focus solely on commercial development. Because there are other residential districts that a person could come in and. Go R3 or what have you. We want to make, we want to make sure.
That's.
We weren't muddying the water.
Yeah. We already have residential zoning. Yeah, we already have residential zoning opportunities in regards to zone definitions, right, so that was all pulled, that's it, because that was blended in with the commercial, which that I'm glad you're gonna pick up on that, so. So anyway, I'm I'm looking forward to getting to the next step of this thing. We're committed to doing what we can to get this done close to, if not by the end of the year, as we can.
Kyle, anything?
I don't think so right now, I think I've been.
So really, we're at the end of the presentation, so I think now that the committee has has had their chance to explain where we, why we were going this direction on things, I think we just leave, open it up to to other planning commission questions, ideas, any other city council ideas and then we'll go out to.
Yeah, I think the first question is just are we on the right path, I mean, is this, you've seen what we've done, laying out a path, identifying it by geographic areas and certain uses that would be allowed within those geographies. If this isn't what you're thinking or what you thought you tasked us with, Mr. Mayor, that we need to know because the next step does need to happen and then we need to resolve this.
If I could, Lynn, real quick, I probably harped the most on trying to find equilibrium between a developer mindset and a homeowner mindset and trying to figure out how to how do these paths intersect, if at all. And I do think we all kept that in mind during this process. You know, I live in the development world where typically I'm asking planning and zoning and council for a rezone or for a use or conditional use or whatever. So for any of the developers listening, we're not putting up the flag that says no development ever, in fact, I think that this is a better guideline of what I would like to see if I was in their shoes. And the example I would give is now I feel like the playbook is pretty clear on what they can or can't do. And of course, as Mike said, anything is open to an ask or a request. But I do feel pretty confidently that this is the master, the Lake Compeska Master Plan with a combination of quite a few people that have reached out during different development opportunities and said, hey, I wish this was better or wish the bolts were tightened over here or maybe there's a development opportunity we could look at over here. I think we grabbed all of those ideas and thoughts and put them into this. But you all will be the judge if we got it right or not, so looking forward to feedback.
And we'll hopefully open up one more last comment. I think the one thing too we talked about is a lot of these are more individual uses of smaller type parcel if you look at it. We also talked about what about the larger commercial concept of a commercial area, of resort. If somebody wanted to do that, there's still an option to the plan new development district that we have. So if somebody's got a much larger commercial concept, whether it be resort or multiple commercial uses, that maybe, you know, would fit, but doesn't fit our one, twos and threes, there's still the back door that could require, you know, require a PUD rezone, but still is that's where everything's laid out and then you approve it just like that through the certainty at both ends.
It goes through the same process when you request a PUD rezone as if you were requesting a CL district. But with a PUD, you've got to be very specific about the governing criteria for that specific project. So again, reduces the ambiguity.
This slide that's up right now, is this static or is it still in process?
We're still in process. No one has it ready to vote on yet, but we've come a long ways, there's been a lot of discussion.
We are in general agreement that as those uses are listed in each specific zone, what if we were to allow them, they would either be not allowed or they would be allowed as a special permitted use or they would be allowed as a condition use, that's where we have come to a consensus on.
It would be nice if we could get a copy of that to to.
Absolutely.
Because from here, I can see the colors, I can't read much at all. And I think it would be very helpful if we all had a copy that we could.
Well, there's nothing seen.
But if we get off the. Then we have a base to look at.
I think, I mean, on the short end, if you just see those in the red, what are those things? Those storage shops, no boat repair shops, no car washes, no hotels, hotels, storage units, no office buildings. Either on the water, across the road from the water. Want to do a resort, it's a PUD at the lake. If I want to do storage shops, boat repairs, car washes, hotels, hotel storage units and office buildings, those are generally conditional use.
So what Diane would like to know, I'm guessing, is on the colored map, where are the details? And yes, that that is, that's out there. That we we just haven't printed it out, we haven't, this is the first time anyone on the council other than those on the committee have seen it, we've had a public meetings, but no one showed up at the last five because it got boring.
Councilman, I just want to make, I I want to make sure that I understand completely. So you pulled out any residential? Correct? So like if you want to build, let's say even a house in, let's say, Zone Three, you're going to just come and ask for a rezone?
No, because here's the deal, it's already zoned for housing right now, it's zoned.
Would that include R two and R three?
R one, R two, R three, R four, anything that's currently zoned, nothing has changed.
Anything on here is still, this is only if someone wants to come and commercially zone it. And if somebody.
Yeah, and if somebody wanted to do an apartment building, which apartment was listed in the CL district or is today. We have existing R two and R three zones to accommodate apartments, so if they want to bring that forward, they can propose an R two or an R three zone.
Which would make the public owners think that sometimes, you know, when we take the man's out, that was primarily an R two, R three type use being part as a commercial lake. And the argument that was being said at that time, well, what if the R two, R three development doesn't work, now he's got CL, he can do whatever he wants. We're saying, no, I want to do more intensive residential, I zone it to R two, R three, and then you know what you're getting in an R two, R three. I want to do CL because I I'm not going to have residential part of CL, I'm going to have a commercial use associated with that area. Right? Mike, you have a comment?
Yeah, it's important to know on here that if you look at your Zone One, the yellow one right now, all, everything that is that is denoted in that zone currently is within within the city limits. Far and away, a vast majority of those are one zoning. Now you got the blue zone, a lot of that, majority of that still is within the city limits. But probably has is is either zoned commercially, there are a couple of like spots that are could be commercial. Some of them are still ag and then the the orange, most of the orange is out in the county, so it's ag right now, so. So that's a matter of, Mayor, to answer your question about the zoning, somebody wants to come in and in the yellow area, that's harder to deal with, right? You know, it's it's because it's typically already zoned. Otherwise, you get out into the orange area, we're going to have to deal with with plating, annexation, et cetera, et cetera, and someone's.
Or the county's going to have to adopt.
County's going to.
Probably cities to adopt similar rights.
So this is, what this does is just give us a roadmap for the for what's possible. The one thing that we we touched on but chose not to go there was, okay, what about the infrastructure around here? We set that aside because that's going to get dealt with, whether that's utilities or it's the city, right, with whatever it is. That'll get dealt with as development occurs and needs occur. We're talking about land use, period. So hopefully, Mayor, that answers your question about the about housing. Residential.
I know that this was beyond what I tasked you with, but just a question, did the subject of Airbnb or rentals come up?
Briefly, but we decided to say that that's a residential use and we were going to focus all things that were commercial. Residential use, whether living there, renting it, whether it's a mall, it's a it's an apartment, it's still a residential use primarily. We don't call apartments commercial, goes on residential primarily. The question on short term rentals is something we said is a bigger issue, that we didn't want to muddy the water, so to speak.
Yeah, because I've already had the question from the public today on it, so, yeah, it's going to keep coming up. And it's probably going to come up in town, but everybody knows it's more likely going to be at the lake.
My question in town, if somebody runs an Airbnb, are they regulated as a commercial use or is that a residential use?
I'm not defer to your.
Uh, no, so they're, it's just a residence.
There's no stipulations on, like your stipulations or anything?
Oh, it's really a, like, honestly, when Councilor Jones was saying about where it's going to show up, I mean, I can see it showing up almost at the legislative level, but as far as regulating them goes. So today, it's just, you know, in our residential districts, we have what a family is defined as, but we don't get into ownership. So if they're renting it out manually or, yeah, yeah.
Day, we're here, it's still a rental.
Actually, this was a very controversial issue already this year, this year's legislation. Where the state and there was a movement by a certain group of people that wanted the state only to regulate BRBOs, Airbnbs, and it was.
It was narrowly disputed in Senate one eighty-nine, this coming back, so.
Yes.
The state is going, is being dragged into it. We don't see a lot of it at this part of the world, Randy will attest to. There are a lot of communities that have adopted rules and regulations. But there is a cost to it and that's, you know, Randy will be able to be more than glad to talk to you about that because we went to the same conference just last couple of weeks ago.
Thank you. Well, one thing I got yet, before I'm done, first of all, thank you for everybody that's worked on this, I mean, you guys have dedicated a lot of time and effort. It's going to clarify a lot of the headaches and issues that we've all had to deal with over the last few years. And then as as Councilman Peter said, it's going to be a more definite answer to whether or not this is something that you even want to perceive.
And we're not saying that this is an end all, say all litany of uses. This is, we we focus on what was already in the CL. Either at this throughout this process or years down the pipe, if somebody comes up with a use that they think could fit in that CL, either as a Zone One, Zone Two or Zone Three, that becomes a legislative act for the planning commission and city council to deal with at that point.
I do have one question, when you got boat repair. Yeah, boat repair shops is a no, and I'm just going to use an example. Compeska Lodge for years sold boats and repaired boats. So now if somebody were to buy that and want to get back into that business, they can.
The way it's written today, the answer, if it's not actively being done at the time of the adoption of this ordinance, if it was, it'd be grandfathered in. But and that grandfathering grandfathering, it goes with the land and not the person.
So I'm going to leave it open to anyone else on the planning commission, city council, further questions, again, we're really, really wanting to know, are there any yield signs right now or do we keep proceeding forward and starting to define the items of what is Lake Retail, what is, what are the standard design?
Okay, we get storage. What defines storage? I mean, it's fifteen docks in one guy's property storage.
That's the, that's what we have to come up.
Yeah, no, that's good.
I mean, because we talked, we talked outdoor storage, indoor storage. You know, lake storage has got a different connotation than it does other parts of the lake and so that's why as Mike had said earlier, we're going to have to review those efficiency as they are with city proper and maybe have some modifications.
Years ago, we we discussed that when we were looking at, you know, campers and things like that. And I think, refresh my memory, I don't think you were there whether or not what we came up with for dock stories, but I don't think that's been followed very well, so.
So go ahead, Brendan.
So for the, all of the different uses with the storage shops, storage units and then the indoor storage facility that we just created. That would be, those all have their own definitions and whatever qualifies them there and then you guys will place those accordingly. But then the outdoor storage does, that still is regulated separately through the landscape and laying or the landscaping, no, the off-street parking and storage ordinance. So those things would be refined and then there's also the design standards in the CL district that can also, you know, you guys will be able to either sharpen that up or put that individually with your special permitted uses.
We know that we're going to have to rely heavily on our staff to provide us the insight, the guidance on where adding apartments. And we might have, this is our idea and that they're going to have to come back with the language to reflect what we're thinking.
That's right, I think the outdoor storage would be a good one to dive into. We've we've we dove in for at least one or two meetings, this and then the definition of a of multiple family housing and that's when we get together on this. There's questions here on planning commission and then we're going to open up for them.
Can you walk us through briefly sort of your thoughts on the hotel motel and how you ended up with a CU on Zone Three as opposed to CU or a pod in any other districts? For zone?
That was a compromise piece, I think, I'm I'm, I think depending on the location, some of us were fine making this a special permitted use in the certain C three areas or if it was a conditional use, you know, and it comes to the board, there's a public hearing. Blake and I and Bonnie from Board of Adjustment Planning Commission, we felt that he don't want to be in the middle. If something comes before us and it meets all of our design standards and just because there's a room full of people that don't want it, then it shouldn't even be coming to us, it should either be special permitted use or not allowed. So there are areas where I think a hotel motel on some of those areas should be a permitted use if it meets some specific standards, that's the fight that still has to come out of this.
Follow up, but but nothing that's lakeside or lake adjacent.
At least at this point of the, where we have, where we have consensus and we all realize you're talking six people, that's going to have to be fleshed out by planning commission.
Public.
And and the public and the city council do several public hearings. And we just want to get to the point where we're handing it off to the greater process, living forward with it, where we might say, well, nice try guys, but this is what we think it should be and we're, that's fine, we're just here to tee it up for them.
Yeah, I wanted to take all the ambiguity out of Zone One and Zone Two especially, and conditional uses being in there kind of derails the whole zoning request because then it's always a possibility, well, it could be this and so I'm not going to rezone it. But if we have everything, yes, no, or a special permitted use, it's clear as day what's allowed, right? That's not to say that they couldn't propose a hotel or resort or something in those same areas as a PUD. But then again, they have to come in with a very specific, very stringent request that governs that that property for that use.
I think what's really clear so far is I am the amateur and these guys have been through the trenches, including Mike. So Mike, any other, any other, was there another question?
We can close up on the leaves here. Resort, so what's the, what is your, you separated both the hotel motel and then resort. Is there a reason that, I mean, wouldn't they all kind of be the same?
Not necessarily, I mean, a hotel motel might be just that, it's just that it's twelve rooms, the resort's going to have it's going to have some sort of much more grander, more accessory use of something with that hotel.
There's a definitions and we've gone through it multiple times already, but there's a definitions tab that is included with with this that will help either clarify it or not clarify it. Depends on where you're coming from, so.
Because we do have resorts and hotel motels defined currently in Orange and they're different.
And they're different, yeah.
I thought resorts was not defined because that's where we started with CL. It was going to be a use all of them. But that would be something, I mean.
That's what we're going to work on with your your crew as soon as we have some.
Carl, did we have, did we have a sample, maybe it was a sample one of your talk?
Um, yeah, we we looked back on previous ones, I think, like the.
I think maybe not. Sample, the definitions to differentiate between the uses.
Because that's where we started with CL, is that we were going to just make it a use and put it in different districts. So I'll verify it all, but.
Thank you.
Diane?
I have a little bit of thought about when you.
thought about when you said, we'll have a list, we'll check it off, if it meets all my criteria, it doesn't need to come before the board, even if there's a room full of people in there that don't like it, if it meets the list, that's it. And that's not how I personally like to see things happen, because I think in our ordinance, we do talk about not changing the character of a neighborhood, and I don't know how you put that in a list, that's something you get input from the public. And I see, and I don't know if you're talking about it being as black and white.
It's, it is, it, it's, it becomes, it removes discretion from staff, from you sitting as a board of adjustment member, from the, from the city council. And the, and the argument is that we have this.
I'm not done, Todd.
And I'm just, I'm just, I'm just explaining how we came up with our idea.
Wait, wait, wait. Um. I don't want to see it so structured that we lose the input from people have whatever feelings they want to express. And if, if there's a checklist and you check everything off and it never comes to the board, then of course you don't have the input. So I guess my thought is somewhere there has to be an intermediate area there where things are still allowed to come to a board when there are people that wanna come and speak.
Yeah, maybe we can clarify this, uh, it, it might, I don't wanna speak for you, but Mike, we, we've discussed this.
You're referring to the checklist is after it's been.
Yeah, so it still needs to go through the commercials.
Zoning process. Zoning, that's an, at the.
That's what I said, the fight happens.
The fight happens at the rezoning request.
So.
And then once it's rezoned, then it's the checklist. So that's why it's critical that we have those items that are up there clearly identified.
And defined.
And defined.
All right.
So that, so that staff and plan commission members and council members valpers, uh, landowners around there, resident, well, in our case, at Lake Combestemault, it's residential. Everybody understands what, what's possible. So the fight is at the point of, of zoning. Once it's done, that's the checklist that, Todd, correct?
Yeah, so I.
That's the checklist that they're saying, look, folks.
All right.
We, we, it's been rezoned, you, you had your say then. If they're meeting these standards, this criteria, they're gonna get it.
So if you're in the yellow, and let's just say it's the old sandy, it's all sunny side, let's say the old sunny side is, is, is now gone, I wanna come in, I wanna take that R1 zone, I wanna go to CL. I come to the, I come to the planning commission, I come to the city council, and I ask to rezon that property. All we're saying there is that if we were to rezon it to CL, it's gonna only allow certain retail establishments, a maybe a bar or church. Those are the only three things that's gonna happen on the water. And if the city council and the planning commission think that this piece of ground that used to be used as a resort, dining area or whatever, is okay to be rezoned to CL, public has that opportunity at that time to say why they don't think it should be. But they're not gonna be able to use the arguments, it's gonna be a campground or anything, that, that, these are the three uses that they get to argue against. If they feel, the city council and the planning commission feel that the public thinks the general character is gonna be torn asunder, then they would say no, but if they say yes, then it proceeds with one of those three types of uses. And where I'm coming from is I think the time for people to be engaged is at the legislative, when you're enacting what the rule is, that wants to be placed, and then you have to try to use discretion, because discretion is what's gonna get you in court. So this way, it's a very laid out. If people have a bitch about what's allowed or what's not allowed, the time will be at the time of adopting of this ordinance. And then from there, the rules are laid out, for people that live at the lake, people that want to develop at the lake, for the city council giving and the planning commission from a guidance perspective. That's just, that's been my whole mission to the whole thing, on the ten meetings that we've had, I've been very vocal. I don't care what the uses are, but once we do this use, there has to be some sort of, it really carries forwards, um, if somebody comes in and asks. If you don't want it.
What you're saying is that if you zone it, in, and it includes three things, a religious institution, a bar, and it's zoned that way, and the public comes to that meeting and says, well, what's it gonna be? And the developer says, I don't know yet.
One of the three.
It's gonna be one of the three, so they choose a bar over a church, but you no longer have any say in it once, once it's zoned, and then the developer chooses a bar.
I don't have any, I don't have any building to, uh.
And you don't know. Once something's zoned and the criteria is laid out as permitted uses and such, it, whatever that person wants to do with that land, what they can do.
Then it's any of these out there.
What we've done, and, and the biggest challenge we've had in the past is fear of the unknown. And I don't blame people at the lake that have, that, that have their homes there for having that fear of the unknown, I don't blame them at all. Because it was so wide.
That's what I'm trying.
Now we tightened it, you take the, we culled it down to a more manageable, uh, set of, of what I'm gonna say should be, could be, whatever the proper term is, uh, allowed there. And so now instead of being this big, the fear of the known, unknown becomes this big. And so it, it, when it's getting rezoned, and there's three items it could be, and if you don't like the possibility of that, then you better be there, because that's the three now, it's not all these things up here that it currently is. At least it's narrowed down to something that's more manageable and has a lot of, well, a lot of thought put into it from both sides of, of the table here, meaning the, the, the council and the, the planning commission in regards to, what should we put in, it's been hard down.
May I ask, Diane?
Yes, yeah.
So Diane, is there some sort of way that you feel would, would be a better direction in that area than what we've gone so far?
Um, the, the only thing I'm concerned about is there's still fear of the unknown, if you're talking about a church or a bar. And I, you can come to the zoning and say, yes, this zoning is fine. And when someone goes in for a permit to build a bar instead of a church, that's such a black and white difference that I can't see that neighbors aren't allowed to say, oh, no, that changes the whole character of the neighborhood, which is part of the ordinance, and I don't see character of the neighborhood. That is, uh, subjective, not objective, and that requires discussion and input from the board and people, and I don't see how that happens without sometimes having a.
Having that conversation. Conversation is having it now, when you're establishing the legislation to enforce, to remove subjectivity from the decision-making process. So that's what we're doing right now, we are laying the ground, foundation for future decisions to be made. Because if we come in and we say, yeah, bar, and, and bar or whatever, uh, what's the other one that's up there? Restaurant. Some people might be okay with a bar next to them, I'd rather have a bar next to me than a, than a church, that's just.
All right, but my, my point got across.
My only concern is that in the ordinance, in our ordinances, we do have the stipulation about the character, changing the character of a neighborhood. Is part of a decision, it's part of our decision-making process. And somehow I think that's not being included in here.
Only when it comes to can do.
And Todd, please.
But that's the rule.
Is it possible to ever speak and not have you interrupt?
Well, if you're wrong.
Oh.
All right.
All right, I'm wrong.
Anyway.
I'm sorry, you're being.
Go ahead and finish.
I'm wrong.
No, no, just. I'm saying, you're, you're making a, you're saying something about a condition, you're saying we have this thing baked into the ordinance that we take into neighborhood consideration, it's only specific to conditional uses. That's what I'm saying, that's what you're wrong for. That's all I'm saying.
All right, and we're still open, uh, if you have a solution?
I don't have a solution, I have a concern. I have a concern, that's my concern.
One more here, if I think, if I could.
I think that's what we're asking, I'm on, we're looking for what Diane's saying.
Yeah.
Asking for solutions today.
Yes.
So just so it's clear, if somebody has a concern, we're not gonna demand a solution out of you today. We're just asking for your feedback, so you're stuck.
Thank you. So, so to follow up with Diane, when someone does come in for those three uses, is there no way to help me and say, Rhonda, what are you building? And that I'm committed to that, and that's the only way I'm getting that, that permit, is I'm building a church or I'm building a bar? I have to, I have to disclose what I'm planning to build, is that, is that asking too much? That's what it is, and that is what the condition is given, I'm given that use to build a church and it stays a church indefinitely. Unless they, they want the, the new owner, twenty years from now, whatever, five years from now, goes in front of the board, and at that point, I wanna make it a bar, and then the public again now has the opportunity, as Diane is saying, is that an option?
It is an option, and that's what a PUD is, so a PUD is.
No, no, these aren't PUDs, though, like, these are the three.
That's the only standpoint, that's what a PUD is, so when we get zoning requests for PUDs.
Right, no, but if, what, what Dan is saying is we have the, or Mike is saying, we have the three permitted uses. Why am I not required to say what I intend to put there so that, to Diane's point? I know as the neighbor next door that it's a church, it's a bar, or it's what was the other one that we could put there, so I know. And that's the only thing you can build there. You can't change your mind from it's gonna be a church to now it's gonna be a bar unless you go in front of the board again.
It's a great question, it's a great question.
In order to do that, we would have to do PUDs, right? So a PUD, you have to spell out exactly what you're gonna do, and then it's only approved or.
Why can't we make them do that?
Let's take the other commercial districts. I have C2 zone, I all agree we have C2 zone. A C2 zoning generally enables, all agree with that. And in the C2 zoning, there's a litany of permitted uses, and it's a litany of conditional uses. When anybody comes into a neighborhood and asks for his own piece of property, C2, we say, are you doing 137 or 9? We don't. We say, we're okay with this piece of dirt being zoned C2 for this litany of uses. We're doing the same thing here. And, and then when we're making the policy, somebody before us made the list of the twelve things in the C2. Come in and I do this C2, it's okay, we're doing the same thing here. If the, the question is, are those three uses on the yellow area the ones that we should or should not include? If we don't wanna have a restaurant, or we don't wanna have certain retail establishments on the water, then that should be a no. And that's the question when we come forward, if, that's what I'm trying to say.
Or they should all be conditional uses, known committed.
But I'm gonna say, if they're all conditional uses, though, we'll never pass any zoning. And so if you wanna know exactly what they, we could just get rid of the CL altogether, and you could only require PUDs. And then everything comes in with a very specific use, and you're looking at one use, one project, one zone for that specific use. But that means we're gonna can the entire thing, and we're gonna do everything as PUDs.
And from a development standpoint, I think what Kyle would tell you, and you'll see how sort of you've been said during our discussions, that's a lot of time, money, and effort that you have to expend, that may come, that you're not only gonna get it rezoned, get it to the point where it's been rezoned, now you gotta go through another step to say, you know, this, that, and the other thing. And therefore, there's no ambiguity, there's no certainty with decision-making.
That's getting right back to where we are right now.
And then we just about say, get rid of the other thing.
Okay, it. I understand where you're coming from, cause what you're stating is exactly what my submission and the public, the neighborhood public submission, when we had, um, your rezoning from with R1, R2, whatever it was, um, up at Northeast Waterton. And as it ended up, we ended up saying, look, I understand the public's, because here's the list. It was, was originally proposed for rezoning. And the concerns were exactly what you, you are stating, your concerns, Diane. That's how we ended up with a PUD. Because then it was defined clearly, they had to come in and say, that's what they wanted to do. Now, if we wanna make everything, like I said, if we wanna make everything a PUD at the lake, then we really gotta look at doing that same thing in town, if that's what we want, because, you know, I'm, I'm protective of residential areas, I don't care whether it's at the lake or whether it's in town of rezoning into things that are different than what they were originally intended for. And I'm always cautious with that. Um, and with that caution then, if that's the case, if, if we have to know what if a developer is going to do with a property, then all of our zones, all of them, really should just go away, and everything should become a PUD. And what you're gonna see is, that's anti-developal. There's a, a lot more risk associated to a, I'm in a pigeonhole, this is, this is what I can do, this is all I can do, and I'm gonna invest millions of dollars. So I understand what you're saying, this takes what was originally there down to something a lot less in regards to what can go there. Um, the only way you're ever gonna know for certain what is there without change and without compacting, you're gonna have to.
Bruce?
Uh, just a couple of comments, I think a lot of this is gonna have to stay. We'd be covered by how we set up conditional uses and permitted uses. You know, how we set those up, you know, we, we talked about this, obviously we pared that down. Pared down what we can do for, for, uh, permitted uses. I think that would make a big difference, cause then it's come to the planning commission, then people have an opportunity to come in and voice their opinion on those things, but that would be mainly for conditional uses. So I think that, in, in my opinion, should take care of a very deal of that, basically, it would be ambiguous.
A half hour to be to, uh, city council, but I, I, I really think if there's anyone here that wants to speak on, uh, the ideas that you've seen, I, I'd welcome that. Anything, Doug?
Uh, yes, you can only have a hearing for conditional use. And we had an exact case where somebody across the street from us wanted to put in storage, storage. And at that time, you had storage shops and storage units, and it was confusing. And they went to, and what you did is you actually moved storage shops down to conditional use. And so they went to conditional use, now all of these changes happened because we had a hearing. They, so then they did a conditional use, had the hearing, we said, fine. The neighbors at the hearing said, yeah, yeah, but we'll let them work, that's what we want. So what I'm saying is for the SP use, why don't we, why don't we allow a public hearing? In other words, planning says, yeah, city says, yeah. I was gonna say they'll do whatever the, the planning says. But then we could have a public hearing that says they wanna put in retail. And then at that point, they'll say, then they would, then they would know, and they'd say, well, we wanna put in a bar. At that point, why not have a public hearing? To say, the, the, the neighbors, we, we have enough people, we, we don't like that. And then, but you don't have a hearing, you don't have a hearing with permitted use, am I correct? Permitted use, no hearing.
You have a hearing, you have a hearing at the rezone, so you have a hearing at the plan commission, and then you have one at the city council before it could ever get rezoned.
And if you as a group permitted use.
That's what we're saying, we're saying here, right now. It's gotta be rezoned, Doug.
Yes, yes, yes.
This is taller, yeah, this is different than the current.
They're asking rezoned to CL.
They're coming to, they're coming to planning commission to get this rezoned into commercial. That's when they're saying the conversations and the public's input.
At the planning?
Planning commission?
That didn't happen with our neighbors.
That was the board of adjustment, two different boards.
Well, okay, but they approved that, okay, so they approved it, went to the city, and the city was, at that point, there was no.
The city council has nothing to do with a conditional use.
But that's, that's how we resolved all this, we came, we came to, we came to a city meeting, did we not? And we said, no, we don't.
Different horses at this rate.
Yes, there's three, there's.
And so, when, if there's, if a use is listed as a conditional use, regardless of zoning district, it comes to the planning and zoning board acting as the board of adjustment to handle that. And once the board of adjustment has rendered its decision. And once the board of adjustment has rendered its decision, that decision is final unless you take the city to court. Okay? If you want to rezone a piece of property for a subsequent use, i.e. the, the wedding thing that they were talking about, they would, they, they came to us, the planning commission recommended approval of the rezon, not the use, but the rezoning to allow anything in the CL. They went to the city council. The city council said, no, we don't want that. But if you come back as a PUD with a specific plan, then it comes back to the planning commission recommending it to the city council. Has nothing to do with the conditional use. That was a PUD was laid out specifically what they were going to do on that piece of property. So I'm not trying to argue with you, but that's the process that was followed. And that's what's laid out in state law.
Now, why did the city say no? Because we heard they said, yes, we had to come.
They sent no to the rezoning of SC. They came, they came back, but they told the applicant, if you come back as a PUD, you will consider. Wrong with that?
That's right.
That's very, very specific.
And, and the same parameters are set up now in order to get it into the CL, then same conversation.
So what we're saying here is that any of those uses that you see up there, they say SPU or special permitted uses. All that is saying is that if Todd comes and I own a piece of ground across the lake for. It's not on the water, so it would not be a yellow. It would be a blue. I want to come and ask the planning commission and the city council to rezone that property that's currently zoned residential to CL. And the use, because I get to ask for maybe be certain retail uses that are identified elsewhere in the ordinance with specific standards, restaurant or a bar, a private recreational use. Again, and they would, maybe some of these are going to have five things. Some of these might have 25, you know, specifics, design standards. Your argument is going to be at the planning commission and the city council of whether or not I don't like, I'm okay with two of those uses, but the two uses that they might do, I'm, I have a problem with. And so I'm going to encourage you not to rezon. And then the city council and the planning commission will say, thank you very much for your comments. We're going to take a look at your concerns and the community's concerns as a whole. And if we think that it's in the best concern of the community as a whole, that sometimes it's not in the best concern of the one when it's the concern of the whole. And you might lose that basis. And then what happens is it gets rezoned. I come back and I can do one of those four. Or the city council might say, you know what? This does upset the applicant. It's not in the general character of the neighborhood. We don't think it's appropriate to rezon it. Thank you very much for playing Mulan. It's still residential zone. That's how the whole thing plays out.
Does that solve the second lady's question? She didn't, she didn't see that. That there'd be a chance to do that. They'd have to go to the city council meeting, right? To, to voice their.
To rezon.
Right?
To rezon.
But to rezoning, but is that announced to the public?
Yes, yes. I'll publish to the newspaper, adjoining property owners within 250 feet get a letter that the property is proposed to be rezoned.
But it'd be rezoned for restaurant, bar or tavern.
No, it'll be, it'll be rezoned to whatever.
That's what we're saying.
Yes. It could be any one of those four you choice.
Right. And then what, what could stop that? That's what I'm.
You as the neighborhood would need to come out and make, we don't want any of those four, we don't want any of those uses. We don't like.
Well, then there's a public hearing that would do that.
Got to stop that. Got to stop it after the zoning. That's right.
I think there's a fundamental misunderstanding or, or a confusion about the philosophy of zoning generally. I, I get the idea of trying to litigate every single project. But, but that's not really this, it's not really a, a functional way to do zoning, right? The, the idea is, the, the question presented is, is this ground appropriate for either a bar, a tavern or a restaurant? And if it's not, or if it's not one of the, if it's not appropriate for one of those three things, then you, you show up and say, that's not appropriate. It doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood, those kinds of things. We don't, we can't get into a place where we're going to litigate every single project. That's the problem. Because then, then that's when you have a tremendous amount of subjectivity discretion issues. Uh, it, it depends on who's on the board, who's on the, who shows up at the meeting, those kinds of things. This is simply to set a set of ground rules that if approved, these things will be allowed on this dirt. These three things will be allowed on this dirt. If not, then those three things won't be. It'll, it'll retain residential properties. So the question is, does it become one of those three things or does it retain residential? Or in the zone two, is it the five things or six things, those kinds of things? Because otherwise what we end up doing is litigating projects. Do we like the developer? Do we like the, the, they're from Fargo? Do we like that they're from Lake Bed, you know, those kinds of things? We start litigating the actual project and that's not really appropriate. And I don't think it's really statutorily allowed either. Um, so we have to sort of, is, is the ground okay for the worst case scenario, which is a restaurant or a bar or a church? Like that's, I guess that's the question presented at the rezone. There's going to be two hearings. Anytime anything gets rezoned and I, you know, if you had success, my understanding, I didn't follow the PUD deal. But it's my understanding that you had some measure of success.
Only through a lot of hearings. Now, you still have to answer the questions. What's a way to solve her, I have the same question she has. And then when you have your, there's going to be zoning voting in the zoning, you're saying, okay, any of these three.
There's, there's two public hearings.
What's the solution?
We're not allowed and we're not, it's not really appropriate to litigate what someone does when they own a piece of property. It's, we can say whether or not it's appropriate for that use, right? If I, I can't tell you really what you do with your property as long as it's within the confines of the zoning ordinance. You understand?
Well, yes, but then once it, once they say what it's going to be. And, but it's not different, is that's what she's saying.
We're getting into a real, putting itself in a question about.
It's not generally when I take a zoning district, we're gathering, it's residential, commercial, industrial.
Yeah.
When the community has laid out a plan for development and they want to, and they want to zone a specific piece of ground, we're saying that in this part of town, we're okay zoning this piece of property on a certain use, certain district. And within that district, we're okay with the litany of permitted and conditional uses as a community. And we made that decision at the time of developing the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Randy has.
I was just going to say, let's, let's ask Brandy of Antherkey what their thoughts are. I think we've discussed the political side. Let's ask them what the, what the interpretation should.
Like special planning?
Yes. I just said.
So basically what the improvement to what they're doing with the special permitted uses is you are looking, you're breaking down the uses because how are, we have conventional zoning. So we have permitted uses and additional uses. So then they're breaking them down if they are a special permitted use of what are we okay with a bar? If you're going to have a bar, these are the design criteria that you have to meet. And then so those are all things that will go through the ordinance amendment process. So it, it's only going to be, you know, in, through those processes that they'll continue to work on. If they, uh, if there's things that is just like, I couldn't accept that. You know, those are things that can be discussed or like the community can accept that. Because obviously the ordinance amendment, what will also have to go through the public process. So if there are concerns, once they get all the fine details of the special permitted uses ironed out, then that can all be questioned at that time. But that's where really the improvement is coming from, with putting design standards and criteria to certain uses.
Yeah, to talk a little higher level, it's the zoning in general. The Euclidean form of zoning that we operated under, that was established decades ago in Ohio. It, it's based on setting land use on a list of, if you zone this thing, you could do these things. And it, it's part of the American way, as high levels I can hear. It's people having freedom to do with their land, what they want to do with it, knowing that they don't need to spell out every specific little detail along the way about what their intentions are. It gives them some breadth, some latitude. And so all our zoning districts have these lists. You can do all these things. And you can move on and also do these other things with special approval or conditional uses. And really the only way to address the bar issue in the CL, to the, the point these questions have been asked, is to make them conditional uses in all three of these zones. But then you're, you're, if we could do that as a community, but then you are blocking down that use to be only approved by conditional use under the BOA's approval. That doesn't go to the city council. Um, it was, it would simply be a, a BOA approval, um, as a conditional use. That I think is the point that in my mind it comes into play with these questions about how do we decide if it's a church or a bar? You got to make the bar a conditional use. That's the only way a board says, yes, you can have the bar there. If you want to limit it that restrictively. Uh, that's one way to accomplish that. I wouldn't necessarily advise that, but that's one way to accomplish it. What they've done here is tried to leave some breadth of a landowner's ability to have some latitude. Because they buy it with the intention to build a bar, but they pass away the next week and their, their granddaughter wants to build a church on it. So now she's got options. It, it's a silly example, but that's the reality of land ownership and land use and how we try to regulate it in a way that's not giving away the farm and letting people do whatever the heck they want to do. But yet giving them some latitude and some ability to have decisions on that.
Okay, I'm just looking at, see all permitted use with restaurants and bars were conditional.
I just want to.
Now it's being thrown into permitted.
I just want to point out that, I mean, to some extent, the conversation over the last 10 minutes has been about things that are already in ordinance of water county. And that are not changing. So I'm not sure, I want to make sure that the other people from the lake have a chance to be heard in this forum um, on new concerns of what is being proposed here. Because I mean, that, that's like, that's like an existing concern based upon the difference between plan, planning and zoning, board of adjustment and city council. That's not changing. So I want other market chats.
Page seven of the Convesca Master Plan talked about the habitat vignettes around the lake. Has the committee or will the committee consider those specific areas that's outlined in that Convesca Master Plan to be excluded from development because of protection of the water bodies around the lake? Which gets a few of us excited about development. Uh, Tony Sloop being the most recent example of a, what we think is an important water body connected to the lake for the overall ecosystem. Like will the committee or ask the committee look at those to exclude those from a development purpose?
So, uh, I believe I'm going to have Blake explain because he did a good job in committee discussing the, the pros and cons. Are you talking about 50% water being used in the formula to develop the, the land?
I think just, just in general, in general context. Yeah, we've had some initial conversations on that. Certainly there's more conversation that we need to have on it. Yeah, some, some have already been identified on the map. All of that stuff will certainly be talked about in much detail.
The master plan talked about hooking those areas up, you know, through a fish tunnel, even as high as a kayak tunnel. Top notch to allow it. The various ways to hook the stack up, fish down the tank. Water falling. So I'm just curious.
There aren't certain things that we could, we could do in our ordinance in order to provide additional assurances as a community that we protect those, those lands above and beyond what's stated.
And certainly with the developer that if they come and this is going to protect the areas, they're going to rile, they're going to rile some people up. Instead of placing a lot of lunch.
So what Mark is maybe also thinking of is these areas were cut off. These were backwater spawning areas. These were the sloughs that were cut off by South Lake Drive, North Lake Drive, which, uh, those of us that have been in the fishing, that's where we go to find fish a lot of times. And those have been cut off. And what are we going to do to mitigate some of that, those issues?
Uh, eventually maybe we'll reconnect some of those.
Right.
The Convesca, I don't know, it might not be my life type of, the possibility exists. If they're developed, then the possibility becomes less.
Yeah. Anything else?
So just to, Mark, to your point, you and I have had a little bit of discussion on this. Blake brought up some really good discussion last meeting. I believe that what we're tasked with, don't not use or what can or can't be developed in regards to the type of land or whatever. I, I think that's a much, much bigger separate issue that needs to be addressed. And it's not just that around the lake. It's other areas that we have.
And so just to be clear that that won't be a charge of this group.
Uh, it hasn't been a charge, although it's in the back of our minds that it is an issue that needs to be.
And I'm sure we're going to talk about it in, in subsequent meetings.
Yeah, so we have to get there. We got to get there, but we're focused on zoning.
And I do think though, there are some natural areas when I put the map together just based upon where there was water and this where you could see, and we just said, well, we're just going to stay out of these areas because it's not CL one, two or three and it's brown, then they're not seeing anything there. There could be more areas added that I did not take the time to know at the master like that. I think most of those areas are going to duck tail to what's in there. That's what you see.
All right. Um, we have to keep moving here. Um, good, good. Uh, you, one final comment.
One quick follow up question to point of clarity, those brown areas on your map, Todd, those are off limits for CL zoning is what the intent was?
That's the intent.
Okay. Just one of my.
All right. Uh, appreciate the input. Mayor, do you want to?
I don't know further input on what's being proposed other than what are the next steps? Because I see that there are going to be definitions needed, design standards needed. Do you have a list of those items that need to be defined and designed? Because you can't really pass it off to staff to define something unless you have a, a, you know, something that you say, we need to define this or we need design standards on this. Do you have a list on that? Do you, do you need to meet again to come up with everything?
We're going to be meeting probably every other week for the next.
Okay, so you'll begin that list. And that's good. That was, that was one concern that I had. And then a couple of the other questions that I had, I can wait because it's going to be like, are you going to be proposing this as one item or are you going to be proposing this under three different items? You know, C1, C2, C3 type thing. But, but we'll worry about that later. I was just wondering what the next steps were to get the, keep this going. To me seems to be the definitions and the design standards because that's what people are going to want to know.
And these are public meetings. They are open. And we need to get Diane's concerns addressed. We need to get embedded. We need to get those things. You're more than welcome to come in. I know it's really nuts and bolts. It seems like when you've all been there, but um, that's, that's really the, the things that we'd like you to have, you know, there.
And how do we know, I've been away for summer. How do I know when these meetings are happening?
They're on the website, the city's website.
And you can sign up for the notifications, uh, on the website. It, it, it's been about every, about every second Monday.
We're, we're meeting at Mondays usually around 3:30, 4 o'clock.
Yeah, they're on the agenda center.
They're on the agenda center and they're usually before city council. On those days, most of the time.
And so I'm looking for the lake.
Commercial Lake District.
It'll probably be on the planning commission, probably be on the planning agenda.
On the right tab, on the right side of the website, when you go on the agendas tab, there's usually like a meetings today or upcoming meetings. And it'll say that, and I think it's just CL Lake Committee or something.
Yeah, there's some of them on there right now.
So if you look at, there's today's meetings and then upcoming meetings.
Is there where the meetings will be listed?
Brandy, are the notices for these meetings going out like that?
No, they're just post. Well, so yeah, they're, they go under the planning commission, uh, group if you're already subscribed. You go.
So if you're getting planned, you're getting notices.
See, I got an email on this because of the planning commission. Jeff, it's mine and I have to.
And a phone call.
And.
If anyone else has a question about how to access or get alerted, you can contact city staff, city hall, some other times. Uh, this committee need to break up for the day. Uh, this committee chairman, are you okay with me asking?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. Uh, motion made to adjourn by Councilman Danforth, sorry, second by Councilman Bueller. Okay, Bueller. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Question will need to know. Oh, yeah.
Are you doing, you know? I know.